Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Yarmouth Select Board of December 5th, 2023. This is a hybrid meeting which requires that I read the following notice into the record. This is the formally advised as required by General Laws, Chapter 38, Sections 18 through 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16, 2021, and is extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. The Yarmouth Select Board will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided below. And on our website, we have the instructions to come into the meeting by Zoom or by telephone. Please rise for the public regents.
For the regents, we have the flag of the United States of America, two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item is public announcements. Do we have any announcements? Anyone? No, I guess not. Okay, and then we'll move to public comments. Vita. You have seniority, Vita. Over everybody in the town.
Okay, so I was just given a copy of the entire housing plan report or plan. And I only had a chance to glance a little bit on my tablet before it started crashing on me constantly, several times because of the length of this document, I guess. But I would say this seems like a very comprehensive, very well-done document that seems to have a lot of interesting information, a few of the things that I saw, including information from the 2020 census already, the data from that. And so I just wanted to congratulate Mary and her colleagues who produced this. And then, glancing through it, I found that the Forest Road project apparently has been nixed, at least temporarily. And when I asked how that happened, I understand that we owe this to this board. So thank you very much, because I just hope that you will continue keeping an eye out on those people who are pushing that project and that somehow we can get back that property and declare it to be non-buildable in the future. But anyway, thank you for, at least temporarily, stopping the whole thing. And now, unfortunately, as I was driving here on the car radio, the school district strikes again. They had an advertisement looking for students for the middle school. You know, this is amazing. All we need is for somebody to send a message to Boston there, and we'll have another huge influx of illegal aliens here with their kids if we have all these spaces available. I can't believe that happened. They had been advertising up until the kerfuffle arose over the illegal aliens, and then they had stopped it. And this is at least the first time that I heard it. I can't believe they're doing that. I really can't. Thank you.
Pleasure, Vita.
Hi. I'm Cheryl Ball, and I wanted to come tonight, talk about two items that are not on the agenda tonight. One is the Yarmouth Resort. It's been a little bit of a time since we've had any kind of update as to what is going on over there. I think there's a lot of us that are still curious as to why there are individuals living in there, if there are building code violations. We'd like to know what the fate of that building is going to be. I've been in contact with the owner of the commercial building next door, and he's also very concerned. He said he's been unable to get any answers from the town as to what's going on over there. One of the reasons I'm here asking about it is because we just learned last week that the two individuals that have ownership and interest in the Yarmouth Resort, Deleep and Ashok Patel, have also been part of a deal that just went down with the purchase of the Bayside Resort. Those two individuals are president and vice president of Janson Management, and Janson Management has just purchased the Bayside Resort. So seeing what happened at the Yarmouth Resort, I'm also concerned as to what the fate of the Bayside Resort will be. Finally, with respect to the Yarmouth Resort, I don't know if this board is aware, but on Friday, all day long, there was a woman standing out front with a shopping cart and all of her worldly belongings. I went over and spoke with her. She is indeed homeless, Yarmouth's newest homeless resident, I guess. I did get her contact information. I reached out to Kip Diggs and Julian Seer, sent them an email. I have received no response. Apparently, they not only didn't respond to me, they didn't respond to her either, because over the weekend, I saw her pushing that same shopping cart along Main Street in Hyannis. So that's the first set of comments I want to make. I just think it's absolutely reprehensible that an American citizen is standing out on the side of Route 28, while in contrast, we have our illegal aliens living comfortably over at the Harborside Suites with all of their needs taken care of. I think it's shameful. So speaking of the Harborside Suites, there are a lot of us that are curious what's going on over there as well. Many of us that drive by it have noticed that there's a large construction project going on outside. We don't know what that construction project is. Regardless of what it is, I think our bigger concern is who's paying for it? And is that something that is going to be a cost to the town, since we don't know what it is? And then finally, with respect to the Harborside Suites as well, it has come to my attention that there are four confirmed cases of tuberculosis at Harborside. And others may be pending because not everyone has been tested. This information has been known for a couple of weeks, and it has not been made public to the Yarmouth residents and taxpayers. It's been quite a while since we've had any update on our town website about the Harborside Suites. I believe October 26th is the last date we received an update. So I think we deserve to be informed as to what is going on over there, especially now that there also seems to be a public health concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tom Sullivan has his hand up on the...
Who, Tom?
Tom.
On the screen?
Yep.
Tom Sullivan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How are you this evening?
Good evening, Tom. How you doing?
Pretty good. Today, this afternoon, I received an email from Epsilon. Epsilon is the company that's doing the environmental assessment at the airport. I talked to Mrs. Greeley on this, and I got her blessing to speak here tonight on it. One thing on the connecting, on the email to read the assessment for this December 12th meeting, it goes to a dead end, doesn't work. It just leaves it hanging at the airport webpage. Two, I want to bring this up. I did forward an email to Mr. Rittenhour. I don't know if he got a copy of this earlier today. So if he didn't, and this is, I'm just bringing it to the board's attention, that in their other section, they want written comments submitted before the December 12th meeting, so they can screen them. They don't want the comments at the meeting. And I think this is intolerable, and it should not be allowed. You know, I've been dealing with this airport off and on now for 20 years plus, and this is the lowball for me. It might be good in other places, but I don't think it's good for here. To have written comments submitted beforehand, and they won't be allowing people to speak at the meeting, then why even have a meeting? So I would urge the board to write a letter objecting to this, and also with Mr. Rittenhour also, okay? And the other thing I'd just like to bring your attention, because I heard you reference in the, tonight about the select board. At town meeting, we changed the name from selectman to select board. But what we didn't do is change the charter. For that to be effective in the town, it must be changed in the charter. And it has not been changed in the charter, which, when we changed the charter, that has to be approved by the legislature. So as far as using the term "select board," I don't think it should be used until you change the charter. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No one else up there?
Somebody else? Okay. All right, the next item is recognition of December retirees. Jane Fogarty, Natural Resources, retirement date effective December 8th of 2023. And as Bill is going to come up and address us on that.
Good evening. I'm back again.
You're losing everybody.
I promise, I'm not pushing them out the door. But I would like to thank the board again for recognizing all our retirees, particularly Jane. I mean, Jane's been here 38 years. I only hope I can do her career justice in just a few-minute speech. I've given it some thought, and the best way for me to try to describe Jane is as a champion of people. She's a champion to the residents and visitors of the town of Yarmouth, who she has served all these years. She's been a champion to the town that has employed her and that she has honorably served and represented, and she's been a champion to her peers and coworkers who she has served alongside. Jane started her career in 1985 as a police dispatcher, ironically, at 424 Route 28, which was then the old police station and is now the Natural Resource Office, where she is retiring as an administrative assistant. She tells me that she started with a typewriter and a punch card when she started at dispatch. This was long before the days of 911. I guess the punch card was a little bigger than an index card, and the dispatchers would type all the information from a call on it. Each time they typed a new entry to do with that call, they would punch the card with a timestamp. When responding officers returned to the station, they could add narrative to the cards that corresponded to the calls that they responded to. I guess it was routine, too. The Cape Cod Times would call the station every night to ask what was going on, and this is how they got their information. This just kind of paints a picture of how different things were back then and the type of change that Jane has seen over the course of her career. Eventually, I think in the early 90s, 911 came along, and Jane and the rest of the dispatchers would become certified 911 operators. And of course, all the other systems and technology would advance to where it is now. Excuse me. When I say that Jane has been a champion of people, this is something that has resonated throughout her whole career. Jane has always taken the time to spend with people who were calling for assistance and to make sure that they felt they were being heard, no matter who they were or why they were calling. Jane is a very compassionate and empathetic person. She truly cares about other people, gives with all her heart and soul, and wants nothing in return. We at Natural Resources have over 600 mooring and slipholders that Jane deals with on a regular basis and who she has developed really great repose with. It's absolutely been amazing, upon Jane's retirement announcement, the amount of these mooring and slipholders that have taken the time out of their days to call and talk to Jane and wish her well, or actually take the time to come into the office for no other reason than to thank Jane for all of her help and wish her well. They had no other business to conduct at the office. This is a true testament to the type of representative of the town that Jane has been. Jane has always been a team player and looked at her coworkers as family, fostering that environment. She's always the one in the office to make sure we don't miss anyone's birthday. Little things like this have really cemented together our team at DNR. Jane has mourned and grieved with and supported her YPD family over the loss of coworkers and family members who have made the ultimate line of duty sacrifice. Again, the town of Yarmouth has not just been a workplace for Jane, but a family sharing all the ups and downs that families share. I also mentioned that Jane was a champion to the town body and the town staff. Jane has served as a union shop steward and negotiator for most of her career, and served as the SEIU Local 888 Chapter President for over 10 years. In this time, Jane has fostered a very strong working relationship between the union and town administration. Jane has worked tirelessly to negotiate fair and equitable contracts, as well as fair solutions to other issues, and always looked at issues with an open mind. I think we all owe Jane a great deal of gratitude for all of her contributions. We wish her well in her next chapter. Jane will still have interactions with the town for the next few years, as she will be working directly for SEIU 888 as an internal organizer. We know she'll do a great job there, as always. Jane?
I just want to say, I spent more than half of my life working for this town, and the 38 and a half years went by really, really fast. But I was blessed to have two jobs that I really, really loved, along with some great coworkers who I considered friends. And obviously, I really appreciate administration, the select board, for supporting me through my entire career. I keep saying I have bookends. I started out with a bob, I ended up with a bob, and I got very lucky, just like I went full circle, starting out at 424 Route 28 and ended up at 424 28. I want to thank you all for everything, and I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Before you go, we have a citation for you from the town. And it reads as follows, "Be it known that the town of Yarmouth hereby recognizes Jane L. Fogarty on her retirement as administrative assistant, effective December 8th, 2023, and for dedicated service to the town of Yarmouth. Be it further known that the town of Yarmouth extends its sincerest thanks and appreciation for over 38 years of tireless service, first in the police dispatch and then in the Natural Resources Division." This citation is duly signed by the Chair of the Yarmouth Select Board on this 5th day of December in the year of our Lord 2023, and I have signed it on behalf of each and every member of the board. And if you come forward and accept this, please.
Thank you, Jane.
That's a lot of years of service, 38 years. My God. Okay, next item, if we are ready, is our 630 item, amendments to the entertainment license for Thatcher Hall, 266 Route 6A, Yarmouth Port. This was, this was an advertised hearing, was it? Does anybody got a copy of the packet? Can I see that? It would be easier just to get the notice out of there. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, back again.
We love it here. We love Yarmouth.
I am going to, when I find it, read the notice into the record, and then we can begin the actual hearing. Legal notice, which appears to have been published on or about November 24th, reads as follows, "The Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority for the town of Yarmouth has received an application for an amendment of an annual weekday and Sunday entertainment license from Yarmouth New Church Preservation Foundation, DBA Thatcher Hall, 266 Route 6A, Yarmouth Port, Susan, is it Moller? Is that how you pronounce it?
Correct.
Manager. Thatcher Hall is keeping their existing licenses and proposing to include new entertainment, including but not limited to wedding ceremonies, dance performances, comedy shows, fitness classes, dance classes, and open houses. The proposed amended weekday entertainment hours will be Monday through Saturday from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and Sunday from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, at Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth. The selectman's meeting begins at 6:00 PM. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 PM Friday, December 1st, 2023, at the licensing department located at the town hall, or can be submitted electronically to publiccomment@yarmouthMA.us." Okay, tell us what you would like us to do. The first thing I want to say to you is, maybe just to save a little time, hopefully it will, included but not limited to language that has its place, but not here. That means you can do anything you want to do, not just what you're asking for, and we can't do that. We can't license you for anything and everything of an entertainment nature. We have to know what it is that you want to do and when you want to do it. So that's something more you see in legal documents, this is the first time I've seen it, in an application for an entertainment license. So let's go through the things that you want to do and talk about them.
All right.
I think that might save you some time. Okay, wedding ceremonies, is that entertainment, a wedding? I mean, clearly, a wedding reception is, but a wedding ceremony, do you need an entertainment license for a wedding ceremony?
Honestly, I don't know, but we wanted to make...
I mean, does a Catholic church and station out need an entertainment license to do weddings?
We aren't a church. We're...
Well, you were a church at one point. You were a Sweden-Borgian church historically.
Correct.
But is that entertainment, a wedding license?
I don't think so. I think the issue, and we talked about this a little earlier, was that there was a desire in one of the earlier discussions that we had to conduct wedding receptions.
Correct.
Correct.
And that the wedding reception, and this had come up in another video as well.
Yeah.
The wedding reception needed to be a part of the entertainment license, and that a wedding ceremony itself, that part, did not necessarily represent entertainment.
I mean, I'm not saying we're against it or we're prohibiting weddings. I'm just saying, is that something we have to license as a form of entertainment?
I think we just need to clarify, if there's going to be a reception, because a lot of times, people like to...
Do both.
Get married and then do the reception right there. And that was where the discussion came up of the entertainment license. But, and I think that the way we had sort of explained it was, well, you're okay to do the ceremony, but you can't do a reception there until you get the license amended. And that was one of the things that we sort of had on the list of when a potential...
Let's move on beyond that and just go through the list here, okay? Dance performances, shouldn't be a problem, right?
No, it's, I mean...
That's entertainment. Comedy shows, that seems to be entertainment. Fitness classes. I suppose that is, right?
Could be.
Some people say it's torture. Some people would say it's fun. I don't know. Dance classes. And open houses, I don't think you need an entertainment license to do an open house. Why would you?
Well, for example...
How is that entertainment, an open house?
At the Christmas stroll yesterday, we had a magician that was actually put there by the Chamber of Commerce, who performed, who did a couple of performances in the afternoon. So we just, I think in filling out the form, it was a little unclear to us exactly what was covered under entertainment licenses, obviously, but we wanted to make sure that we were covered for what we were doing and that we were being both compliant with what the town wanted, as well as being a good neighbor.
Yeah, I went two years ago, and they actually had music, they had people playing instruments, and I think they had some choir folks and stuff like that. I don't know. I'm just thinking out loud here, could we put the Yarmouth Stroll as an event, instead of breaking down all the things that maybe you do? Because that could change from year to year also.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
If I may, may I add a resti? I think part of the concern in working with this is that when we submitted our original license application, we did not list wedding receptions, because as you're saying, we figured it was included in the other categories we had submitted. So part of what we felt like we were sort of responsible for in this revised application was to be overly specific, because originally, we thought we covered everything, but then we were, when the application was applied for the wedding reception, we were told that it wasn't specifically listed, so we could not do it. So we're just a little confused about how specific we have to be.
I think one of the problems, very frankly, is the breadth of what you're asking for, and I don't have a problem with that. It's just, when we get applications for entertainment, they're usually a lot more limited. Somebody will say, you know, we're going to have musical instruments, so many musicians, that kind of thing. This is, and I can see it because of the facility, it's, you want to open it to, almost like the cultural center, a lot of different things, and make sure that you enumerate the things you want to do. So I get that.
Our goal...
But you can't have a license to do everything. You just can't. The events have to be, or the things that you're going to be doing have to be named.
I guess what we're struggling, go ahead.
If I could ask a question? You mentioned the cultural center. What is the license to the cultural center? Because the cultural center does a lot of the exact same things that are being asked for here.
I don't know.
There's a potpourri of items that happen at the cultural center. Now, they may not have asked for entertainment license for those. Should they have, or should they not have?
They do have an entertainment license.
But I know they do wedding receptions. I know they have dancing. I know they have music. I know they have exercise classes. I know they have regular classes. I know they have art drawing classes. And...
And I don't have, and I don't have a problem with that, but I do have a problem if they say, "We want to do A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, and anything else we want to do." Or, putting it another way, "We want an entertainment license to include A, B, C, D, E, F, and G." No, you gotta, we gotta know what's going on there. We got a licensed particular, and I don't know anything problematic about having an extensive list of things, but I'm just saying, we can't have unenumerated events.
I guess I'm a little, I'm trying to figure out the solution, that if we removed that language from the application of what you're... of what you're concerned about-
You don't have to move the language from the application. I'm just suggesting to you that we're not going to grant you a license that says that.
I understand.
I don't have a problem with amending the application or anything like that.
I'm trying to figure out then, if, for example, we did not have here listed a ballroom dance exhibition, if suddenly, if it was not specifically listed in the application, if that meant we could not do that next year. So I'm feeling a little bit flummoxed on how we solved that.
I think dance classes would cover that, dance performances would cover that.
I think it's possible. I guess my point is that we could come up with something, a magician, who would not be specifically listed in the list. So, to be honest, we were a little confounded by the application and just trying to make sure that we were, we had it right this time, because we didn't feel like we had it right last time, so.
Okay, so let me just quickly go see if we have anybody in the audience that wants to be heard on this. Vida.
Vida Morris. Are we talking about the building that used to be the Swedish church?
Yes.
Yes.
Who are the owners of it right now?
Owners? It's owned by a nonprofit.
A nonprofit, it's not a town-owned facility?
No.
Okay. So then, my other question is, when you start talking about exercises and dancing and what have you, do you have proper insurance for that kind of thing in case of accidents?
Yes, we have insurance. The building is owned by the Yarmouth New Church Preservation Foundation, which was formed in 1998 to preserve the building, which was basically derelict, and has raised about $1.5 million in the last 20 years to bring the building back to being a showcase, frankly, in the middle of Yarmouth Port. And our goal now is to try to figure out how to get the building used by as many people in the community as possible who have, among other things, helped to pay for this magnificent restoration. We had almost 300 people come through on a Halloween event that was part of the, around the Common Historic Organizations. I think we had over, maybe close to 250 people at the stroll on Sunday. And it's really just wonderful to see this building coming back to life. So we're just trying to figure out how to keep that up and make it useful.
About the Halloween event, I'm familiar with the stroll event, so what was going on inside the building for that?
The Halloween event, basically, we're open for trick-or-treating, and we set up a photo section. This year, Carrie Beers from the Yarmouth Port Library was reading stories downstairs. It's an event that is done with all of the historic organizations around the Common, including the Stork Society of Old Yarmouth, Bangs Hallet House, the Gory House, this year, the Yarmouth Port Library, the Chapter House, and the Winslow Crocker House, all participated. We have a group of volunteers, families come, they trick-or-treat among the historic houses. It's really a lot of fun, and it's a great way to get people into these historic buildings that normally would never dream of going into Thatcher Hall or the Bangs Hallet House. So, it's, but it's not entertainment per se. It's not, there's not a Halloween party, for example, in the building. It's, come in, get some candy, take a picture, see the Halloween decorations. We had a skeleton playing the organ, it's a lot of fun. Listen to a story downstairs.
Okay. Joyce.
I'd just like to congratulate them on a beautiful space, which I know Mary Ann Agresti has a lot of responsibility for the restoration there. I've gone to concerts there, and everything seems exceptionally well-run. And I would have no problem, although I realize there are attorney concerns here, I would have no problem with giving them kind of a wide scope, because it seems to me that the events that they would have would be likely to be wonderful and very well-run. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to go to the board to see if they have questions or comments, and then we'll come back to you ladies. Mark.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I too want to, I too would like to compliment you on the way in which this facility is being used. And, you know, obviously, the operations, the maintenance, the upkeep, you know, that's a challenge. And I commend you for being dedicated to help keep this facility in beautiful shape. I've been there, I've, I can see it has enormous potential in terms of serving the community. So I too want to applaud you for what you're doing. I understand the chairman's concern about the description of the notice, but quite frankly, I happen to think it was nice to write a hearing advertisement that told the community broadly what you're interested in doing there. So I think to some degree, if there were some issues, it would be helpful to hear from folks in the community about them. You certainly made it very clear what your intentions are, and if there were problems or issues, we would have certainly heard by now. So I'm actually glad that the notice was written as broadly in describing all the kinds of activities that you want to do there. And because there's nobody here complaining or expressing an issue, I think to some degree that that's a pretty good indication of community support, at least particularly in this case. So I'm fully supportive of this proposal, and once again, just want to thank you and commend you for all your good work.
Thank you.
You're doing.
I don't have any questions, I'm, too, I'm supportive. The only question I have for Decoder is, do we have a comprehensive list of entertainments that people can just check off?
So on the application, it kind of is generic in a sense. However, in this case, wouldn't it just fall under public shows and events for the licensing matter? That way, it's a broad, general description to where you can host fitness classes, things like that. I think that'd be my code. How to word it on the license.
With the, did you actually get the reception permission the last time you were here?
We actually withdrew it. And we have not been offering wedding receptions in the last few months until we got this, particularly until we got this resolved. There's a number, there's a number of issues, honestly, with, from a practical standpoint, that have nothing to do with licensing about wedding receptions in the building. And for right now, we've found it easier just not to do it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So you're not seeking at this point wedding receptions?
We're definitely seeking weddings. Right now, we have not been necessarily seeking wedding receptions. And in fact, we have been telling people that we were not doing them. We certainly weren't going to commit to them as long as this was up in the air. We'll see where this goes in the next, but right now, we have not been doing them.
Geez, I'm not against the weddings. The question I'm asking is, do you need an entertainment license in order to have a wedding there?
Or the reception.
Reception was our understanding.
Reception, you do, yeah.
Right, so we were offering-
But even without an entertainment license, what's to stop them from having a wedding there?
The ceremony or the reception?
The ceremony.
No, that's fine. Do those in your own home.
Right, so we're offering people-
Just about anywhere, right?
Right, we're offering people the opportunity to do ceremonies there, we're just not offering them the opportunity to do receptions right now.
Right, I'm just suggesting to you, I don't think you need a license to do weddings.
We may not.
You need a license to do the reception.
Correct.
But anyway, we'll go to the darkest, see what she has to say.
I too want to commend you on the project there. I think that it's been a wonderful addition to the community. And I've had the pleasure of going inside there and actually seeing what's there with the murals and so forth, and it's just extraordinary. I support absolutely you're getting a license here. The only thing I'm a little concerned about is when we were talking on a previous occasion, it was bordering a little close to nightclub. And we want to make sure that we don't have anything that's going to impact you in that respect, because of course, then that changes a lot of things as far as the appearance, what has to be done in the appearance of the building. So I fully support you, right up to where we can. And I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Peter.
In terms of nightclubs, one of the issues was aisles. There are fixed aisles in the, between the pews. I, full disclosure, I used to be on the board there. I haven't been on the board for a number of years, but I used to be on the board there. The, none of the neighbors have complained about the noise. In fact, one of the neighbors is here, sitting in the back. They close down the music at 10 o'clock. And the music, when we've, I've been there, have not been able to be heard outside the building. So it's very much contained within the envelope. And I brought up the cultural center, as did you, Mr. Chairman, and I think that the licensing at the cultural center and here should mirror each other, because they do a lot of the same things. The cultural center operates 365 days a year. Thatcher Hall probably has, probably has 30 to 40, if they're lucky, a year. So it's, the intensity of the use of the building is considerably less than the cultural center. And I know the cultural center does weddings, I know they do receptions, and all the other items that are issued. And the million and a half dollars that was put into that building, a lot of it was supported by the town itself, from funds from here. And it's one of the most magnificent buildings in the town of Yarmouth and on Cape Cod. I fully support this, and I fully support Susan and Mary Ann, who have been on the board and worked very hard for years and years and years. And I think it's a great asset for the town. You know, however we can clean up the licensing language, I think is great, but they do need to have a potpourri kind of license, because that's what they, that's what they present.
I was with you until you used the word potpourri. I'm not sure that the cultural center deserves that either. But other than, I'm trying to work on this language issue. Other than the Yarmouth Port Stroll and the Halloween, are there any more holiday-type celebrations that are of that nature, kind of like open to the public, that you've described?
We do Around the Common every year, which is done also in conjunction with the other historic properties around the Common, which is, basically, all the historic properties around the Common are open for free on usually the first Sunday in September. Sometimes there's, there's not usually entertainment in the buildings. It's usually just a chance to come in and sort of get a, and get a tour. Sometimes there's a lecture.
I don't think you need a license for that.
No, I, we didn't, I don't think we anticipated that we needed a license for the open houses.
For the Halloween, that's why I'm asking these questions. I think you probably would for the Halloween and for the the Yarmouth Port Stroll. So maybe we could add to the list of events, Halloween celebration and Yarmouth Port Stroll celebration, something to that effect.
Would that mean we would need-
Whatever used to, you know, that would be covered.
Would we then need to come back if we decided to do, for example, a Christmas event?
Yeah.
To do what?
Would we have to come back then if we had decided to do, say, a Christmas event? That was-
Seasonal events.
So I, I'm-
Well, it depends what it is. If it's music, no. If it's dancing, no. It's singing, no.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to interrupt you real quickly. The, the All Around the Common, people come in, leave. At Halloween, the people come in, get some candy, and leave. And at the, at the Christmas stroll, they come in and get cookies and leave.
And listen to music.
So, 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 my argument is, you're trying to strike a difference without a difference.
I just, I vehemently disagree with that. There is a difference. And they don't come in at the Christmas stroll and leave, because I've been there before. They hang around, they listen to the music and enjoy, enjoy the facility. Halloween, I've never, I've never been to that, so I can't comment on that. But let's look at, let's look at this language. Wedding ceremonies, again, I don't think you need a license for that. Dance performances, fine, in my opinion. Comedy shows, fine. Fitness classes? It's okay. Dance classes? Open houses, I don't think you need a license for. And then I would probably add to that holiday celebrations involving public entertainment. And that would cover you for the existing two holidays you mentioned and any other holiday, as long as there's a public feature. But you know, you know, I don't think, anybody disagree with me, I don't think to have a, an open house, you need a license.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think the problem is on our side. I don't think we need to, I think we need to provide greater clarity to applicants in terms of what an entertainment license really includes.
I think entertainment is the common, ordinary use of the word. What is entertainment?
I understand, but I've-
Do you consider this entertainment? I don't. Maybe some people do.
No, but the point I'm getting at is, is that it's, obviously, it's not clear to these applicants what's included in an entertainment license. I think the more we can be, we can have a particular definition that goes, and it's expansive, to include the areas that we think it includes. I think the more we can make that information available to applicants, I think the better off everybody will be. So I think, I think the problem is our problem, I don't think it's theirs.
See, I'm not getting, I'm not getting in the problem, and I'm not getting into blame-laying, I'm trying to get into clarity.
What about just open houses providing entertainment?
Excuse me, you, Decoder, earlier you used four words that seemed to sort of maybe cover everything.
Again, an open house is just to expose people to the facility, but, yeah.
Decoder, yeah. I think it would help to use the words "public shows" and "public events." That way, it umbrellas all of these minor events, too. And it leaves it open. So if they want to do a Christmas thing, if they want to do a different holiday, they could do it under the "public events/public shows," because the entertainment aspect is a public show. They're opening the doors to the public. So therefore, leaving it at that, and then it umbrellas and stems down for all the other fitness classes and things like that, I think is the beneficial way to do it. That way, it's all covered. And again, as long as it doesn't trigger the nightclub code requirements.
Yeah, if it does that, then they're going to have to deal with the building department.
Yes.
We understand that.
Requirements are.
I think going back to the application, when we wrote the narrative, we weren't necessarily listing these things as items that required an entertainment license as much as trying to educate and explain what the building was being used for, and then assuming that the board would see what needed to be licensed. We, we did find the application a bit confusing, honestly. But I'm sure some of that's on us, obviously. But I think there are things listed that I agree with you that probably would not require an entertainment license. I really liked Decoder's language, and I would be very curious to know how the Cultural Council is licensed. We actually called them to find out, and the person we talked to did not know, so. But I think we're very similar types of organizations who have taken an old building, restored it, are now using it as a terrific public space, and want the public to use it as much as possible.
So, Decoder, if we changed it to say Thatcher Hall is keeping their existing license and proposing to include public shows and public events?
I don't think we need to rerun the legal ad, as we've already sent the legal ad. It's just the licensing description itself is that what we're trying to clarify.
Okay, so on the ad itself, we're okay, and it's on the description?
Correct, so for example, I have it right here. On the entertainment, it would say, "License granted for amplification, live orchestra music, and then public events, public shows."
Okay.
So it covers it all.
Well, I'd make a motion. Oh, we'd have to close the meeting first.
Do we have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would make a motion to approve the license with the amended wording- And I would make a motion to approve the license with the amended wording as stated by Dakota.
I'm just trying to make sure that that covers everything that they want to do. Public shows and events, is that what the language would say? Public shows and events?
Yeah. That pretty well covers it.
Does that, would that cover somebody renting the building for a private party? Or be okay for that? It'll still be public.
I don't think, no. I don't think that is public. A private party is not public.
So what would happen if someone wanted to rent?
Do you do that? Do you have public, private parties?
Have in the past and we have not done it. Again, we have not done it recently until this was settled. So it would be the same as a wedding reception, in effect, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So we got to go further than public shows and events.
So the current license is approved for amplification system, which I believe we defined as 60, up to 60 decibels.
Yeah.
Um, moving picture shows, theatrical exhibition, and then the like orchestra bands and things like that. So I don't know what the private event would include. I, it would have to be whatever's already granted.
Correct.
Right, right. But if it was, if it was already, if it was something happening, like a, somebody had a.
Birthday party.
An art-goring, a birthday party, a, that, the only thing happening was what's already listed in the license, we would be okay.
I know that there's been lectures there. There've been divorce parties. There have been, there have been, um, there have been.
I don't know about divorce parties.
There have been, there have been a number of, number of funerals and, and memorial services.
Public shows and events.
Maybe showers.
They play recorded music. That's another point.
Yeah.
Says no recorded music. And it sounds like there's, there's, a lot of these events include playing the music. That's kind of the big thing. Public shows and events, recorded music. If it's private parties and functions, that's sort of a different area too. It's not open to the public.
Okay.
That should be included. So there's, there's ways of having broad categories that cover things. And, and I, I think that the public shows and events, you should look at the recorded music. The other live music is covered. Everything's up to 60 decibels.
Is a dance class a public show or event?
Also.
I would say no, but that, but they want that. So I think you got to add that. A pub, a public show or a public event is different than instruction, right? A dance class? That's not a public show. You don't go to watch somebody else do dance classes.
What type of dance classes? Is it like a zumba class or is it like a private ballet class? That's, zumba classes would be open to the public where a ballet.
Well, don't you want to do private classes or no?
Well, what we have done in the past is we've, for example, rented to the Cape Symphony for their ballet classes. We've also done.
LA classes?
We have done that. We're not doing it right now, but we have done it in the past. We've also done, uh, we just, this year, somebody rented it for a night for a tango class. So it's.
Yeah, I, I think I, I don't have a problem with public shows and events, but I certainly would add dance classes to that. Because I don't think that's covered by public shows or events.
Okay.
I just want to make sure they're getting what they're looking for here.
I mean, do we need to include then yoga classes? Vocal classes? Would we? I mean, I, I.
Education.
No.
Or, or arts education? Would that cover it?
We have something in here about exercise classes, fitness classes.
Exercises and our, or, and/or arts education? Would that work?
What is it?
Exercise classes, arts education, which might cover a ballet class or a painting class or something like that.
Dakota, is it possible to get the cultural centers? I think that might be the easiest thing to, to do.
See, dance performances would probably be okay under public shows and events. Comedy shows would probably be okay. We could add dance classes. We can add fitness classes.
Could we say private instruction? In that way, we don't have to say every single type of what's taught?
I don't think it matters who's, who the instructor is, as long as the dance classes.
Right, but does that mean, like, if, if we wanted?
A lot of organizations hire someone to do the classes.
If we wanted to do a yoga class, would we have to make sure that was listed as well? That's the question.
I wasn't specifically saying.
That's exercise, isn't it?
I guess you're right.
It's not dance.
Like, one day I ran a printmaking workshop, right? So we have to cover that.
So Dakota, what's the verdict?
What does it say? Cabaret concert dance, dancing by entertainers or performers, dancing by patrons, exhibition and public show.
Do they have a, do they qualify as a nightclub?
They are a museum assembly. I believe they're an A3 use, which is the same as Thatcher Hall.
So if you had public shows and events, dance classes, fitness classes, you'd probably be, you'd probably be covered.
Okay.
You'd have everything in there you want, plus you could do your special events. So why doesn't somebody make a motion that?
I will amend my motion to cover those items.
Okay, so, so the motion is going to be to allow for, in addition to what's there now, for public shows and events, dance classes and fitness classes.
Correct.
And, and I think that's everything you're asking us for tonight. I'm not saying that, that, that would universally cover anything you might consider later. I don't know, but.
It, we haven't hit edu, education. And as again, Mary Ann indicated, she did a printmaking, printmaking class. And I know at the cultural center, they do painting classes.
Cooking.
Live cook, live, live art.
Those aren't entertainment uses. I, I think, you know, that's, that's the thing. You could do, you can do a cooking class. You can do an art class.
Right.
You don't need an entertainment license.
That's not entertainment.
But the public show that you wind up after you do your rehearsal, that's entertainment.
Thank you, that's really helpful.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which kind of goes back to Mark's helpful comment that, you know, we, we don't, what is entertainment? Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm serious. I think if, if you did legal research, you could, you could make a career out of it, you know? And there'd always be that one thing that's kind of on the cusp or a hybrid thing. I mean, a sadomasochist can say, I consider, you know, self, self infliction of this entertainment. Crazy individual probably does. But is that included in the common understanding of the word? You know what I mean? You can debate these things forever, but I think, I think with Dakota's suggestion, public shows and events, pretty broad.
Great.
And they are, and they are distinct from private events that the public can't, cannot attend. In addition to that, just to be safe, we've added with Dorcas's revised motion, dance classes, just to be sure, and fitness classes. And I'm looking at, the only thing you don't have here is, is wedding receptions, but you said you're not seeking that right now.
Right now, we're not doing them? I mean, I'm sorry, what? We need to? Yeah, I mean, we were.
We, we postponed them because we wanted to be respectful of this process. But it doesn't mean that we don't want to have.
Yeah, we would like, we would like to get back to it.
But didn't that then come into the parameters of nightclub?
It could potentially trigger.
Yeah, that could potentially.
Triggers nightclub.
It does not have to.
I think that was a big problem.
I think one of the, our question was if it was fewer than 50 people, then it would not trigger the nightclub. Is that true or not?
Oh, I don't think it is.
Okay, all right. But that's one reason we backed off, was because we did not want to trigger the nightclub designation.
No, I, I want to be clear. I want to be clear. It's, it's perfectly possible to have a wedding reception without triggering the nightclub requirement.
I think we've covered, and in those hours, Dorcas would be from nine to 10.
It triggers the nightclub.
No, it's perfectly possible to have one without triggering the nightclub. Nightclub is about low lights, nighttime activity, above acoustic music over 60 decibels, table and seating that has ill-defined aisles. So, and.
Number of people.
Um, so if you have it over 50, there's, there's, you know, a different requirement for protection. But frankly, it's a list of these six things, and if you trigger two of them, you're a nightclub. But if you don't trigger them, you can have a reception and you're perfectly fine, so.
Music's a factor too.
Yes, above 60 decibels.
There's got to be an automatic triggering if there's a fire, that that alarm, that that music is basically shut down and the alarm is, is triggered because.
I would like.
With that over at the senior center now.
It's very specific in the building code that if you trigger two of these items, low light levels, music generated above 60 decibels, nighttime operating hours, tables and seating that creates ill-defined aisles, specific area for dancing and serving beverages only. You have to trigger two of those to be a nightclub. We can have an afternoon wedding reception without low light levels, with acoustic music at 60 decibels only. You know, so my point is, I think we should add wedding receptions to the license and let it be a building department issue, as it would for any event, that if, and this is what Mark has said, that he would review them on a case-by-case basis. So, I mean, for instance, you can have a concert that also could be interpreted in this way, if you kind of open up a big dance floor. So I don't think we should isolate wedding receptions as an issue.
And Mr. Chairman, I will amend my motion to include wedding receptions. And then leave it to the building department to determine if it's a nightclub issue or not.
The only thing now, I'm, I'm a little concerned about is whether we're going to remain within the scope of the legal ad. I don't, I think we're getting away from that. And so I'd have some concerns about that. That the public's not on notice, given the, the way the ad is, is phrased. I'd be a little reluctant.
Even though it says wedding, wedding ceremonies in the public ad?
Wedding ceremony and reception is night and day, really.
I'll second that. Let's go.
You want to add that?
Yeah, let's.
You want to add wedding receptions? Okay, you're going to add wedding receptions? Okay. Okay, we done?
We're done.
Hey, all those in favor? Oh, he's got something. Hurry up, Peter.
Have we covered rentals to third parties? Because that was questioned as well.
That doesn't come into this.
Doesn't come into an.
Doesn't come into it?
Arrangement, that business, you know, that, that's.
Don't need to worry about it, Dakota?
No, because the, the establishment is licensed for the address.
Okay, okay, okay.
Premises that are licensed.
Right, okay, I withdraw, withdraw my comment then.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, no. I'm going to vote no, only because I'm, I have a concern about the scope of the legal ad on the wedding receptions. So I'm going to vote only for that reason, otherwise I'm fully supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hope you all come to an event sometime.
Absolutely.
Back to the computer. Let's see what else we have here. Solar Wolf, we got to get a new name for that. Solar Wolf. Energy update. Reminds me of the Wolf of Wall Street.
There you go.
Remember that movie? And so we have here. Bill Scott's going to take this one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Uh, Bill Scott, Assistant Town Administrator. Joyce Flynn is also here from the Energy Committee. You should have a memorandum in front of you, December 5th, 2023. The program is now the Yarmouth Assistance Program, based on the contract that the board signed on October 17th. What we've outlined here is sort of some of the products or deliverables that we're working on with Mass CEC, uh, the Clean Energy Center, the original, uh, agency in terms of the Solar Wolf and the Solarize Program. So what we're looking at is, you know, we want to make sure that we have the correct client data, what the status is, where their permits are, so we're building a database in that regard, so that as we move forward, we know who's ready to proceed and who might need some more time to move forward. The other thing we're working on is sort of FAQs, uh, you know, through Joyce's organization, Joyce Flynn, uh, she's had all, you know, a lot of questions over time and we want to package those that would go to the clients per se. And then frequently asked questions is a good way for them to ask even sub-questions to those or additional questions. And by virtue of that, we would disseminate them to the program participants. Mass CEC is working on a program manual, that is with Sun Power. Sun Power is the company that is willing to help, uh, solve this problem by virtue of providing materials and, uh, work, uh, on homes or households that haven't had the work finished or started, where deposits were taken. So Mass CEC is still working with Sun Power to that extent on a contract, so we can't tell you the exact nature of their contract or their starting date or the manual, but it's something that they're working on right now. Implementation outreach, we believe that once we have the FAQs, the client data, uh, and then the manual done, that we will hold a meeting. So by the time we get to that meeting, people will be fully aware of what the programmatic approach is and this, and last, the schedule for implementation. The key to this is, we want to make sure that we're very comprehensive and we don't give people expectations that are beyond the program, but also, uh, that they understand what their obligations are and, and what Sun Power and Mass CEC's obligations are. The original program description is on the reverse side. This is the one that we brought to the board on October 17th with the contract. That hasn't changed. Basically, and, uh, Mass CEC, uh, was a help in actually writing a lot of this to make sure that it was clear as to what Sun Power's role is going to be and their role is going to be. So we have the contract signed back from Mass CEC, the one that the board authorized the execution of. And, uh, so we're proceeding with them and they are proceeding with Sun Power. We do not have a relationship, we as in the town, with Sun Power, uh, but they will set up relationships with each program participant directly. Our goal is to make sure we have the correct client data, that all the questions are answered, and that as we go through developing the program manual, that we incorporate a lot of that information. So we believe that the best way to do this is by the time we get to the public meeting, everybody's aware of what's behind us and then we educate them as to what's in front of us. So the new name is the Yarmouth Assistance Program, or YAP.
Great acronym.
There you go. CEC's choice, I think. Any questions by the board? And we'll, uh, through Joyce, we'll, we'll send out this memorandum. She was kind enough to send the entire package that we had the last time, uh, which brought forth some questions from newspaper and in a newspaper article, and also some questions from participants. But our goal is to try to get as much of those, even the anomalies, uh, sort of collected so that we can answer as many questions as we can before we proceed.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a question?
Yes, Peter.
Right, on the, on the back page, the second to the last paragraph, only eligible residents who meet participation requirements are eligible to participate. Participants in the program will only be responsible for the balance of the cost they contract for with Solar Wolf. I talked to them and they wanted 90% upfront. Does that mean that Solar, Solar Wolf is only going to come up with the additional 10%?
No, no.
Because I've already paid 90%?
No, they're, they're basically, participants in the program will only be responsible. The program participants for the cost of the system they contracted for Solar, we, uh, my understanding is Sun Power is going to install based on what was deposited with Solar Wolf. So. So if a person put a deposit down and didn't either get installation or panels, then we're bringing to the table installation or panels. But I don't have the program manual in front of us, and I will get clarity for the board on what that sentence means. That probably the bottom of this is really Mass CEC language, you know, so the balance of the system, that is, the amount unpaid, I believe, the person would be responsible for. So if you paid $30,000 for a system, no, $25,000 for a system, and $5,000 wasn't on the table, my understanding is Sun Power is going to cover the installation through personnel and materials and not necessarily cash. But to your point, I will make sure we understand what that specific sentence means. And, and again, what I just described is what's been described to me, but I need to see the project manual and the contract with Sun Power before I tell you that's exactly what's happening.
I mean, yeah, it, it looks good, the things are moving forward, it's just, it was hard for me to understand exactly what that, that paragraph meant.
Right, and, and I think that it's important that as we do this, we, we wanna use the FAQ system and, and then the public meeting as a means to engage everybody at once, as it were, because as we get individual questions, we don't want the sort of expectations and program changing. So trying to get these materials done, getting them done with Mass CEC, so that we know exactly what they're going to be bringing to the table with Sun Power, I think is the most important thing we can do. So we're gonna be working on the client data and questions and responses with Mass CEC. But again, we'll determine what exactly that sentence means. I don't know if you have anything to add?
I was just gonna add to what Peter was asking. We have customers who have paid $500 for their installation because at a point, $500 is a dumb payment, they weren't getting it for that, because there were so many headaches in the bad old days with the Old Kings Highway historical permits, that it was felt that we just couldn't ask people to put up the 30%. So I believe there are two who have $500 down. The usual amount that people would have down would be 30%, and the payment structure was 30% on contract signing, then 30% at the time of permitting, 30% at the time of installation, and then 10% at the commissioning stage, which is the stage when you're net metered. And that depends a little on EverSource's schedule, so that's not under the control of anyone else.
Joyce, thank you.
Oh, glad to.
Mr. Chairman, can I just?
Sure.
I just really wanna thank you, you and your committee and staff. You've been dogged in protecting the citizens that were negatively impacted by this issue. This was a great program. It really was, and it was a real effort to expand solar energy in the town. It had all the right elements, just.
It just had a wolf at the door.
Wolf at the door, and you didn't let him win. And, you know, I, I think, you know, this board and the town citizens are just so grateful for the amount of effort that you've put into making everybody whole. It's been wonderful.
Thank you. We just didn't wanna let something that was meant to make the town better, to, to bring community together and remove emissions from the planet, to, to end worse than we started. I mean, it was unthinkable, so we had to.
I think we all say thank you to you, Joyce, for the hard work that you put into this. Thank you.
Yeah, and I echo those sentiments, and I'll add what I said before. This is a highly unusual result, coming out of a bankruptcy situation. In fact, I've never heard of it before. Generally, you get a filing like this and the customers get nothing. And, and as far as I understand, the resolution of this, they're gonna be pretty much made whole. And that, that is an incredible, absolutely incredible outcome.
And we're delighted because there are dozens of other Solar Wolf customers, separate from Solarize Yarmouth, which was only for Yarmouth residents and Yarmouth staff, who will not be helped. So if they're in Massachusetts, they can get up to a certain amount from the Home Improvement Contractor Guarantee Fund, probably a maximum of $9,000 or $10,000, but otherwise, they're really stuck.
That's if they exhaust all kinds of collection efforts, right?
Yes, yes.
They have to go through first, so they have to do quite a bit of work to be eligible for that fund.
And now that Solar Wolf is totally gone with the bankruptcy, I think that will, that will provide clarity for their situation, but yes, it's, it's, it's really tough on them. I feel very sad when our newsletter goes out to them, because so many other people have asked to be on the list, because I'm always announcing something that's wonderful for Yarmouth and maybe a little bit of help for Shrewsbury.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mark?
Yeah, I, I also, while kudos, kudos are being passed around, I also want to add you to the list of people that have been incredibly helpful, as well as Bob Brittenour, our town administrator, and Bill, our assistant. I think this has been one of those issues where I think we've all been outraged over the way this has been handled, and I think this kind of teamwork involving, and again, I, I have to, I have to give kudos to the town administrator. In the meetings that I participated in with the state officials, you know, Mr. Chairman, you were there raising holy hell and making it very, very clear that you wanted to see things taken care of, so, you know, it's really across the board. And also our state reps.
Yes.
You know, they, they, they stood tall with us as well, so it's good to be able to count on that political support. When we ask for it, they're, they're to step up. So, you know, Representative Flanagan, you know, he stepped in, and he's been, he's been a big help in this, and I wanna just give a shout out to him as well. This is one of those things where everybody came together and pushed really hard together, and we've finally been able to do something to help make this right for people here that have been, really been impacted. So I just wanted to add a few other folks that should not, their efforts should not be forgotten, because every time I brought it up with Bob, he was clearly, you know, front and center and very engaged in this effort. He did not let a, a moment drop without being involved, so thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else?
Just, Mr. Chairman, I also like to echo thanks to Joyce. She's like the program savant. She's able to get myself to a position where we're way ahead of the game in terms of the amount of knowledge she has and, and all the questions that have come out of this. I mean, Joyce has been there, very helpful to move us forward, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Well-deserved comments, Joyce. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep, thanks, Joyce.
Thanks.
Next, we have a update on the housing production plan. What's this?
I don't know.
Oh, yeah, I've seen that, yeah, okay.
I've learned a lot tonight.
Good evening.
Nightclub regulations.
When you're ready, I'll start. Okay.
We're ready.
All right, great, so good evening, just for the record. My name is Mary Wagan, I'm the Town Affordable Housing Program Administrator, and we're here tonight regarding the town's housing production plan. I'm joined by members of the Community Housing Committee, Drew Kraus, who's our vice, who's the vice chair, Lee Hamilton, and Asha Visal, and also. Thank you. And also our Director of Community Development, Karen Green. So we met with you last in August and reviewed the housing production plan, and we took your thoughtful comments from that meeting and incorporated them all into the plan. You can see the second page of our cover memo to you tonight, documents where those changes were incorporated. Hope we got the headings right, but everything that you guys said is now in the plan. Most of your comments resulted in additions to the plan, except for one item. Hearing the comments about the proposed development at Forest Road, that item has been completely removed from the housing production plan. And then just as a quick reminder, and for people that didn't tune in in August, you know, what is a housing production plan? Well, this housing production plan is a five-year strategic plan to help the town meet its housing needs. On a very high level, that means creating and preserving housing to keep young people here in Yarmouth, to keep older residents safely housed, and to provide housing that residents can afford. Per the plan, the housing needs that are a priority for this town are year-round rentals, starter homes, housing rehabilitation, eviction prevention, and support of households with special needs. Housing strategies to meet these needs are zoning, these are the techniques you can, you can use to meet these needs, zoning, building capacity of the Affordable Housing Program, creating more units, building more brick and mortar units, and also preserving your existing units. So that's a real quick summary, it's almost like the table of contents of the plan. So anyways, with that, we would welcome any questions that you have about the amended plan.
Okay. I know that Mark has recently been on the radio talking about county initiatives, a pilot program, and actually extending some very high compliments to the people in this town involved in, in housing, so I'm gonna start with Mark.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and that's true. I'm, I'm very proud of the people that work here in Town Hall, that work very hard, particularly on this topic, and that includes the committee members that spend a lot of time and energy on this as well. I'm very fortunate as a selectman to have, you know, you know, your resources, your talents, your energies, really devoted to this, and I was very, I was not shy in boasting about how proud we are as an entire board for the work that you do in this. And we did this at the governor's press conference when she made a major announcement about this housing bill. And I also gave a, an extra shout out to, to Mary Wagan because of all the hard work that she does. She's tireless on this, and she provides support to you and other committees, she provides support to us, and she's dogged on the Affordable Housing Trust, and we are, we would be, I'd hate to think what, how the world would be like here in this town without you continuing to do all the great work that you do. I wanna thank you for taking our comments to heart. You did, and I think the document is, is more reflective, I think, of the sort of where we're at and what we need to do. And I also think, you know, it's kinda sad about the Forest Road development, the way that's all played out, and the way that controversy seems to be building, but I think the document needs to be accurate in terms of where we all stand as a community on that. The reality was, there was, there was a town meeting vote, and, you know, we need to make sure that, that we're much more accurate in terms of, in terms of that project, so I think you've done that. So really, I wanna just thank you for getting it all right, and, and now the tough part is, is, you know, once, once we get this approved by the board, then the next job is focused on implementing it, and we've got, we've got, we've got hard work ahead of us. You know, my hope is that, you know, we'll see some real success, you know, at the State House in terms of creating more resources and incentives to stimulate the market. And one of the things that we've talked about, Mr. Chairman, on the, the Affordable Housing Trust, is spending some other time, sort of focused on some of the, some of the specific developments and market trends that may be constraining our supply of affordable housing, and that is particularly taking a harder look at the housing market in Yarmouth and looking at a much closer, detailed assessment as to what's happening in the Airbnb market, to what degree is that impacting us, and we may wanna look at other trends as well, particularly lately, there have been numerous reports about investor-owned housing and how investors are really coming into regions like Cape Cod and scooping up a lot of housing. So I think what we need to do is to perhaps bring in other resources and other experts to help us keep track of some of the trends that are underway that are making our lives a bit more complicated and making it more difficult to sustain affordable housing, because I feel like while we're making strides, I feel sometimes we're sort of, you know, swimming upstream, and sometimes the water is coming at us a lot faster than maybe what we can handle. So, you know, I think we've got to figure out how, how we basically assess what's going on in the market, and then look at other towns in terms of what they're doing in, in terms of successful strategies for dealing with some of these trends, because there clearly are other communities that are adopting strategies to deal with some of these other pressures. They're taking initiatives, and I think it would be, it would behoove us to really not pay close attention to what other communities are doing and addressing some of these other factors as well. So I think you're all doing a great job, and I, I look forward to working with you as this plan gets, gets implemented and we move forward in Yarmouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Dan?
I agree with many of Mark's sentiments. I had a real good opportunity to look at the plan this time through. Provides a really wonderful explanation of where we are now as a town, and particularly how we got here. What's harder, of course, is where do we go from here, and that goes to Mark's point about, you know, making sure that we actually do something with this plan. I love the idea of the education. I think that's absolutely imperative, because ideas of affordable housing vary from group to group to group, including this group. You know, I think it's important to educate all of our committees and volunteers in the town, so that we're all working from the same page, and that doesn't seem to be the case oftentimes with housing. What's clear is we have to do something, because what is currently existing and the efforts that we've made over the last 20 years just haven't seemed to been able to make a significant dent, if anything, we've exacerbated some of the issues, and not due to our, it's just market conditions and other forces that are at play. But the housing situation is untenable in many respects in the town, so I'm, I'm very happy we've got a very comprehensive, detailed plan. Looking toward the end of the plan, I was particularly appreciative of some of your action items, because that's really what I was looking for, is how do we hit the road? You talked about a property inventory, and I thought that's great, because it seems to be the one thing that's been missing in terms of, you know, where do we want affordable housing? What kind of housing do we want, first of all, but what particular group do we wanna work on? Can we, can we work on elderly? Can we work on veterans? Can we work on all the various types of housing at the same time, or do we have to focus or split off? I don't know, but.
We usually rotate through.
Right, and I'm not sure that's working.
Well, what, what happens is you, you satisfy a need for like affordable rental housing, then if you pull something, if you do something that too quick, more affordable rental housing, your local residents have already, you know what I mean? So then we go to homeownership, you know what I mean, and then we do some housing services, and then we go back to rental. So we kind of, we, we, you know, people call me all the time, and they describe what kind of housing that they need, so we, we, we balance that.
Yeah, I appreciate that sentiment of balancing. I, I absolutely hear you, and I, people do get tired of, you know, we just did two big developments on 28, what are we doing here? Cool it, look at something else, look at elderly, which we haven't done a lot with, to be fair.
Hopefully with the, the Housing Barn Bill.
Yeah.
There's more money for that, so.
I don't have a lot of confidence in the state these days.
I'm gonna, we're gonna figure out how to get access to the money from the Housing Barn Bill, and.
However, one of the other things that the, that the report mentioned quite a bit, and I'm just one person, but I think we need some clarity, because many of the recommendations that you were talking about were talking about revitalizing commercial areas with sustainable infrastructure, and we know what you're talking about. We're talking about 28, we're talking about revitalizing motels, and to my view at least. And to my view at least, that in some ways is that cross-purposes both what we're trying to achieve with the Soaring Project and commercial redevelopment. And I'm not sure that we're all on the same page on that. And I think that needs more discussion and more...
I think, you know, we just got, we just got that $100,000 Housing Choice Award from the state. And I think that's what we're going to depend on to, to make that happen. And I don't know if Karen wants to talk a little bit, because Karen wrote the grant with assistance from Bell, right? And...
Yeah, well, hopefully that will address some of your concerns, Dan, because the focus of the grant is to get help to build on our VCOD, our Village Centers Overlay District, where we have, you know, the, the bones for the mixed use that the planning board and the town envision happening on Route 28. The issue that we've had is really incentivizing that type of development. And we've had some projects that end up all housing rather than mixed use with a commercial component to complement our commercial corridor, as well as housing to provide those built-in customers and whatnot. So we'll be working on that grant conjunctively with some other economic development analysis. And I think it all really complements the efforts of the housing production plan at the same time.
Okay.
So it's on page 85, 84 and 85, if you want to, you know, just look at that really carefully and get involved, because we will need, we will need solid public participation for that.
I think it's good, it's a good step. I just think that there needs to be a lot more discussion and consensus in terms of where we're going. And what's a good fit on 28 and what isn't? And maybe we can do both. Maybe we can do revitalization of our economic tax base and do some inventive housing on 28 as well. But if, you know, I look at that laundry site, and that gives me real pause. And I'm just afraid that, you know, many of the inferences that are in the report could, could be a welcome-to-Yarmouth sign for any 40B developers. I'm concerned about what, all this money we're pouring into 28. And I just want to make sure that we are clear about, you know, what the priorities are and what's acceptable, what isn't. And I'm not sure that we're all in agreement on that. I'll just leave it there. This, however, is a major work by all of you, and I appreciate the work that went into detail that went into it. I'll be candid, my eyes glazed over at times. There's so much detail, and that, you know, there's just so many facets to it. That's why it's so complex, and education's needed for all of us so that, you know, we can move forward and address these issues significantly with some impact, rather than just putting Band-Aids on them, you know, until the next round comes around. But I'm very appreciative of the work, and I'm supportive of the plan, and I really learned a lot. And I thank you all for that.
Thank you, Dan. Dorcas.
Well, I'm still reading it, quite honestly, and studying it. I think that you've done a tremendous job. I think that this document is very well detailed. It has a lot of background information about the town that I found very informative, and that you have set forth some of the action plans that we need to do going forward. I support everything that both our select board members, Mark Forrest and Dan Horgan, have said, and I underscore them as well. I, I think the next step is for us to go forward, implement it, and actually approve it, and then start the implementation process and the education process. We saw how well that worked with the wastewater, and I think we can do it with housing, too. And I thank you very much. And I think we've had a tremendous team that's been working on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorcas. Yeah.
The, the detail, and the detail, and the detail was, was amazing. And it boils down to, what I see is three things: land, infill, septic, septic, oh, excuse me, I mean sewer system. Because none of this is really going to happen, given, given what you've outlined in, in the plan with the nitrogen loading and stuff, until we get a sewer system in place. Now, we, we did get some good news that we've got some of the contracts signed, though the letter that we got from the DEP was kind of vague and hard to understand exactly what they were saying. But it, it was, it was amazing. You talked about tiny houses. You, you hit on every, everything that I could ever think of and things that I'd never thought of. Cost to build right now, basic home, $300 to $350 a square foot before land, which makes it real expensive. And I'm going to ask about Forest Road. Forest Road is crossed off. What does that mean? Does that mean it's gone forever? It's gone for the time being? It's, you're going to donate it back to the town? What are you going to do with it?
The plan, so this is a plan, right? It doesn't prohibit any development for affordable housing in town. Something that's in this plan doesn't, it doesn't mean that this guarantees that it will happen. So the concerns raised about Forest Road were starting to get pretty technical, about groundwater protection, well-water protection. So those wouldn't, we couldn't deal, address those in the HPP.
Yeah, I, I agree. I agree.
So this is much a higher level. So the review of that, of that proposed development is most likely going to happen when an application goes into the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Very good. Excellent. Again, the, the detail and stuff was wonderful, and, and the work that we need to do clearly was, clearly was tough. One quick, one quick question, this, this may be above your pay grade as well. One of the public comments that came in tonight was, was, there was a homeless person who was looking for a place to live. Is there a list of folks that have, that are waiting for a place to live? Do they put them in shelters, or do they just wander the streets?
So the Cape...
Which was, which was the implication that the person made, is that this person is just left on her own. Again, and this may be above your bailiwick.
I talked to that, that nice lady who was trying to help this poor soul, and I gave her two phone numbers that you can enter into the shelter system. So the state came down about maybe five or six years ago. We have a, I'm a member representing the town on the Regional Network to Address Homelessness. And the state came down, because we had so many isolated scattered sites that were sheltering people, they came down and said, oh, you need a, they call a coordinated entry system, where anybody who needs to be sheltered, there's several entry points on the Cape. One of them is Housing Assistance Corporation. One of them is the Department of Transitional Assistance, where people can contact them and get sheltered. There can be a waitlist if you're an individual because of the right to shelter provisions of state statute. If you have minors in your family, if children in your family, you will get sheltered. You get sheltered quicker than if you're individuals. So it seems, it sounded, when I talked to that lady afterwards, it sounded like some activity happened. But I, I did give her my card, my, my business card, and two good phone numbers on how to enter into the system. I think there's also ways that the police department can help, and I'll, I'll, I'll check in with them.
Again, thinking, this is kind of outside of, outside of the agenda, but I get, I want to thank you very much for the information. And Mary, you've done a terrific job, and the rest of your committee has done a terrific job as well. Again, thank you.
I was just on a, I was just on a lecture, Harvard University is doing all these housing lectures on Friday. And, you know, there's just this big book out that's shaking everything up. Homelessness is caused because of the lack of housing units, period. Not all these other things. It's no housing units. So we used to, you know, the Affordable Housing Programs used to be called, you know, homelessness prevention programs. And then, you know what I mean? So it's all, it's, when we are talking about this, we are talking about addressing homelessness. Thank you, Peter, for bringing that up.
Thank you, Peter. This is a very multiplex problem, and hearkening to what Dorcas said, I think, you know, in terms of implementation, there's going to have to be a big educational piece. There's going to have to be a lot of debate, a lot of understanding, a lot of prioritization. As you said, you try to kind of rotate the service to the need, you know, to eventually cover everything. There's a lot of value judgments, I'm sure, that are going to come into play. But there's a lot of good statistical information in here about the amount of income. A lot of the people who have housing are paying, some of them up to 50%, which is really frightening because as you're, as you're trying on the one hand to service more people, you're saying to yourself, how long can these people sustain themselves in this kind of of an economic situation? Probably not forever. I mean, think about that. Think about, take your, assume you pay taxes, and who knows? I mean, how much of a priority that'll be if it comes down and you get kids and you, you know, you're trying to keep the lights on and the heat on and, but assume your net income, whatever it is, and half of that goes, goes to housing. Then you get the car, you get the gasoline, you got repairs. I mean, somebody walks in, says, oh, you need brakes. That's only $1,100 on a rear brake. Where's that money going to come from? You don't have it. It's not there. It's a desperate situation that a lot of these people are living in that have housing. So you're wondering how long they can sustain that. And, and that, that's another layer of the problem. So it's, it's a very, very difficult situation, and I appreciate, as my colleagues have all stated, the amount of work and effort that you're putting into addressing these situations. I'm very, the page references that you cited, I went to on, on the computer screen, I think they were, it was 85, 86. They should be read, and they're, they're very, they're very good talking about the infrastructure that we need, the mixed use, the zoning issues, aesthetics for doing mixed... I, I, I think there's big opportunity in, in mixed-use housing. And we've never been able to really do it on any kind of a sustainable basis yet in town. But the studies that have recommended that and promoted that are not new. They've, they've been around a very, very, very long time. When you look at other towns that have village centers like Hyannis and Dennisport, or you go up to Plymouth, you realize the word that they used about how Yarmouth was laid out in our commercial district, and the word, as I recall, that they used in these Bluestone studies and studies like that was sprawl. And that is the perfect word, because that's exactly what it is. So hopefully, in addition to addressing housing needs, you're going to get some economic vibrancy as well that we can, we can start to see under 28. So thank you so much.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
That we...
Oh, yeah.
Because this goes back to the planning board, so...
I understand. I did see that motion floating around here somewhere.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the housing production plan dated November 2023, as presented to this Board of Selectmen, on the condition that the planning board likewise approves the plan.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve subject to...
Why are we conditioned on planning?
So, here's the steps, right? It comes from the Housing Committee, right? It goes to the Planning Board, then it comes to you.
Okay, we skipped one.
Yeah. And just, just because there's been significant updates, especially with respect to zoning, I'd like to bring it back to the Planning Board and make sure we get an affirmative vote for them. And then when we, then we send it up to the state for approval.
Second. If somebody didn't...
We have a second.
Okay.
And we have a third, which is better than a second. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Great.
Okay. We are now on board and committee actions.
May I look at the written paper?
Sure.
Our study disappeared.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we're going to need a couple of written copies as we go.
At least one for the chairman.
The chairman, how about for this select board member as well? All right, here we go.
Yeah, I'll get this eventually, but I'm going to probably be one of the last ones that do. It's hard for me to keep switching forward and backwards. In fact, in this computer, they just got me going for tonight. He says, oh, you're supposed to bring it in like once a month or so. You bring yours in for updates? I don't.
Nobody ever told me that.
Say it again. Bring what in?
They say you're supposed to bring your computers in for updates periodically.
No, I, I don't.
I don't.
I update mine, mine automatically.
I tried this this afternoon. Everything worked. I get here, nothing worked, so, story of my life. So I'm going to leave it.
There is a way to get them automatically updated.
I'm going to leave it here, and they're going to hopefully do whatever they have to do to it.
Using the paper then, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say...
By all means.
I move that we accept the resignation of Kathy McPhee with thanks from the Age Friendly Committee.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
I move that we accept the appointment of Joanne Mazzola as a regular member of the Age Friendly Committee. This appointment is for a two-year, unexpired term, which will run through February of 2025.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
I move that we reappoint John Stewart as an alternate member of the Old Kings Highway Committee. This appointment is for a one-year term, which will run through December of 2024.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
And I move that we reappoint Julian Mallett and Ellie Lawrence as regular members of the Waterways and Shellfish Advisory Committee. These terms are for three years and will run through December of 2026.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
Move to reappoint Bob Churchill and Rick Crawford as regular members of the Waterways and Shellfish Advisory Committee. These terms are for two years and will run through December of 2025.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Al Keller as regular member of the Waterways and Shellfish Advisory Committee. This term is one year and will run through December of 2024.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Jesse Agopian for a one-year term expiring in 2024 as an alternate to the Waterways and Shellfish Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint John Stewart for a one-year term as alternate to the Waterways and Shellfish Advisory Committee. This term expiring in December of 2024.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
And I think that's it.
That's it?
I think. Wait a second. That's it.
Last one was John, right? John Stewart? You're all set, you forgot them all. All right. So now... So now we go to Town Administrator Items. No, we don't. We go to Agenda Review. What's hiding down there is number four. I know at our last meeting, we didn't have very much on the agenda and thanks to Mark kind of helping us out with some potential matters that we could address, two of which we addressed tonight, Solar Wolf and the Housing Production Plan, were able to kind of orient the agenda. And Bob and I had a little discussion about that and we were saying, you know, wondering how we could be a little bit more organized, a little bit more systematic, a little bit more evenly scheduled on some of these issues. And we were thinking about trying to gear, at least in part, the agenda to certain performance time periods of various departments and then have them come in and report how they're doing on these, on these, what's the thing I want to, performance, on these performance targets. You want to talk a little bit about that, Bob?
Sure, I'd love to. And, you know, first of all, thanks to Mark too for, you know, we were looking at the upcoming agenda items and they were really quite, you know, sparse during the month of December, so we were able to, you know, jump in and put a bunch of those things forward. And I think what we'd like to do, moving into January, is to take a real strategic look at some of the critical projects that we have that have been outstanding, the goals of the Board of Selectmen, all of the things that have been in the mix, involve the staff, and we've been doing this already, in identifying some critical milestones that, you know, that are coming up, that are elements of these projects that need to have some progress and to fill out early in this year, a much more, to, in bottom of Mark's term again, robust, right, kind of upcoming agenda that's geared towards the specific items so that, you know, we can fill in the side stuff as we go, but that we have so that the Board can count on it, staff members can count on it. And Bill and I were talking about this from a project management standpoint. It would really help us too, to be able to, you know, have folks know that, look, here's an upcoming milestone, we're going to be reporting to the Board of Selectmen, updating this project, where we stand on this, and they have time to be gearing toward that and be prepared. And so that, that way, hopefully, that we can be able to count on more substantive updates, to keep the critical projects moving forward, and also to review with not only the Board but the public what some of these key milestones are and to vet that, you know, through the Chairman of the Board so that we can use the upcoming agenda item as a vehicle to kind of set that forward so we can communicate with people as to, you know, where they stand and know you can count on, we're going to have an update on this, we're going to have, not say, you know, what happened to this and what happened to that. So that's a project that we'll be working on and Bill's going to be a great help. We're going to involve all the staff and try to suggest, you know, some more detailed updates as we come through so that you can count on those.
I think, as Bob indicated regarding milestones and projects, a lot of departments are creating product that is permit applications, RFPs for procurement, and the public sees these things advertised and they're probably asking you, what's going on with that? What's up with this? So seeing you at those milestones with some of those products means that you're able to communicate with the public. We're communicating through you to the public. Because I think at the milestone type of stage, you know where we are when we're coming to you and saying, we're going into permitting now, this is where we are, we anticipate this length of permits, or we're going to advertise for the consultant, things like that. So it makes sense to follow the milestones and there is enough, there are enough projects to keep your agendas full if we use that type of system.
It makes sense, everybody?
Sounds good.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I don't want to lose track of is the fact that I think you guys have done a great job in preparing us for town meeting, okay, and handling the budget and the articles. We've done, we've done very well in staying on top of the budget and staying and getting our, so when we go to town meeting, we're in pretty good shape in terms of preparation. And so the first cut of looking at the schedule for me would be, you know, which departments do we need to get in? When do we need to get them in here? So in drafting the upcoming agenda items, the first cut I would start with is looking at what do we need to do? Since we know we don't want to lose pace on the budget and the prep for town meeting, thinking through, okay, what do we need to fill in in order to keep that same, again, robust pace? No, because I think, you know, since, you know, Bob, since you've been here, we've, this is, you know, we have to go back a while, but it's been a while since we've been this prepared and this on top of things going into town meeting, and I think that's been great. So we should start there and then on top of that, I think it's great to be looking at the projects. The other thing that I think is helpful to also figure out is, you know, I mean, I hate to say it, but there are some initiatives that we haven't yet tackled, right? Things on the to-do list, all right? And there may be a need for us to maybe, you know, maybe in a workshop setting environment, go over the to-do list and figure out, getting a sense from the Board where those ought to be, you know, in terms of priorities, you know? Where should they fit in? Which, which are the ones that we need to really start digging into? For example, at the last meeting, I brought up archives, right? No one wants to talk about archives. No one wants to talk about records retention, records management, but you know what? It's really on the list. It's kind of like, you know, we got, we're going to have to deal with it. So where does that fit? Because there are probably some other ones just like it that are hanging out there as well. So in addition to the projects, there's the to-do list, what we, what we have often called the legacy stuff, right? Things that, you know, we're sort of bluffed over and we need to sort of either fix them or find a way to address them, so, you know, and there's a whole, you know, laundry list. I don't need to go over those tonight, but I think those need to be factored in as well. So, yeah, I think, I think, I think, and there may be some value, Mr. Chairman, just having a workshop meeting where what we do is we literally, you know, maybe we take a special night where we just focus on scheduling, going over and preparing our schedule for the coming year and sort of beginning to fill in. So, you know, the administrator comes in with, you know, lists of some of the things that we need to consider and then we have a workshop discussion about where, how we want to lay them out, starting off, I, again, I would say I'd start off with the budget stuff and the department reviews and so forth. But then there's always the ongoing business of meeting with committees, right?
Wastewater, you know.
Well, that's a, that's a project and that's obviously at the top of the list. But, you know, there are those projects, there are committees we need to hear from and interact with. I know there's been a lot of talk about, you know, St. Patty's Day Parade and the Community Economic Development Committee and, you know, we know we've got them on our radar screen and we know that, you know, something's got to be happening soon on that. So I leave, I leave it to, I would leave it to the Chair and the Administrator to sort of help lay out all of those items and begin the process of filling in the blanks, but there may be some value in having a workshop session to go over some of the other missing pieces and the other pieces to this and get everybody's input in shaping this out. So I just put that out there.
Anyone else? Okay, let's look at the actual agenda item, which is the 19th, I guess, is the next meeting.
Now, we had hoped to do, we wanted to do the Matiche's Discussion in conjunction with the discussion of the use of school buildings, ME small, with the Superintendent of Schools. And we scheduled one, but then we just got late notice that the Superintendent can't make the 19th and he got dislocated. So we were thinking of putting the Matiche's on when we, that first meeting in January when we can get the Superintendent here as well. There's a lot of things that impact the whole direction of what's going on up there with the School Department.
That makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, so he'd be available for that first meeting in January.
So we just kick over that Matiche's...
He's on, he's scheduled tentatively now for the 9th.
For the 9th, okay.
The 9th, and so what, make that, that could be a big workshop night for Matiche's and the schools.
Would we be able to hear about the Reuse Committee at that time or where we're sitting at that?
We can. We've been working on the schools with a potential proposal, so we're going to be bringing that in and talk to you about the sort of utilization.
Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, we're talking about one, we might as well talk about both of them at the same time.
Right, right. It'll be, it'll be the entire site ostensibly is what we're looking at.
And the committee, everything.
Yeah, oh, great. Oh, excellent.
We do have the CIP Committee, which generally comes into you December 1st. Their CIP is due, they've finished that. It goes to Finance Committee and we've arranged meetings between Finance Committee and CIP on the 13th, I believe, around there. What we'll probably want to do is come in on the 19th with the CIP. That allows the Board to have an early understanding of warrant articles and projects. We're also going to bring in, we have an online portal now for CIP, so we'll show you how that works, but both Judy Tarver and Sandy Fife, the Chair and the Vice Chair respectively, CIP would come in with me and do the presentation we normally do. And the charter requires December 1st. We have it done, but typically what happens is as you go through warrants, some of the CIP items change and Dennis doesn't vote till later their CIP. So somewhere in February, we come back with the budget, with the CIP, with all those issues reconciled. So the CIP reflects what's going to town meeting and what Dennis voted on in past years. We've had issues with Dennis voting something down and we voted something up. So on the 19th, we can bring in a CIP if you wish and then you'll see it again when you see the budget, you know, reconcile to everything else.
Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Sounds good.
It looks okay?
It fills in the...
So we'll put them on the 19th if all goes well then and move Matiche's out. Then we have this Town Seal Committee's coming in, CEDC, Special Event Funding. I think, are we going to have an opportunity at that time, Bob, to discuss the St. Patrick's Day Parade, the status of it, funding of it?
We're going to go St. Patrick's Day Parade together with the CEDC situation.
We're going to do that on the 9th?
Yeah, we'll do that all on that, that's going to be all on the 19th.
Okay. Because we made some, we made some, in my opinion, some very, some very good progress with those folks.
Be good to hear.
Bob, I won't let the cat out of the bag, it was for next time, but he actually went down and had an in-person meeting with them and...
Had to go to the city.
And I talked to him before and after the meetings, both. He did a great job. He really did. He was very prepared and made some very convincing arguments and some represented the town's position extremely well. So, so that would be good. Hopefully, we can nail that down. Anything else? Anybody want to say about the 19th?
I don't think it's great.
No, I think we've got a...
It's pretty full.
Yeah.
Pretty full, okay. All right. Thank you, Peter. So we'll go then to individual items. Does anybody have anything?
No, I'm, when the Town Administrator Report comes up, I'm interested in getting an update on the Route 6A workshop.
Anything, Dorcas?
Did you hear that, Bob?
Uh, no. No, not at this time.
So we have no individual items. We go to the Consent Agenda next.
Consent Agenda.
And on the Consent Agenda was a request for Select Board to sign Higgins-Craw Road closing docs, which we've done tonight, amendments to shellfish regs, which we signed, wise living change of hours, and licensing, oh, licensing renewals. Tough one, huh, Bob? There's some...
Yeah, it was very problematic. Dakota was beside herself. She made multiple entreaties and there were still some people that refused to get their paperwork in during November and that triggers that state law thing where if you don't get your renewal application signed in November, you have to apply for a new license. So the ones that are listed there have to apply for a new license and I just think that that's awful.
I know the crazy rooster was one.
Four of them. Crazy rooster, free bird, golden jalapeno and the Olympia fish. All of them.
So they, they're not going to have licenses at the end of the year.
Oh, wow.
They're going to have businesses that can't serve alcohol.
That's crazy. But they were notified and obviously staff chased them multiple times.
I don't think we can help them out of this situation.
No, you're not allowed to sign for them. They have to physically do it themselves.
Wow, that's too bad.
And not only should, you know, they know that without having us chase them down, then you chase them down three, four times and then no one responds. It's, makes it very difficult and...
We've had the same thing with the alcohol education.
That's too bad.
The vast majority of people are very cooperative. You get two, three, four, that you got to chase them all over the globe and then they end up in here, you know, on a show cause notice. Why? I don't get it, but, yeah, I can't think of, and since you've been here, Bob, I can't think of any of our businesses being in this position, can you?
No.
It's awful.
May I ask again what those four were? Free bird, Olympia fish, rooster, and what was the fourth one?
Golden jalapeno.
Golden jalapeno, thank you.
So anyway, Mr. Chairman, I'd move the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second on the Consent Agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. And Town Administrator Updates is the next and last item.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm very happy to see that we're going to do a deep dive on the capital improvement program on the 19th. That is going to be great. I could not be more proud of the town's efforts and it's all Bill, the organization of it, that meets the vision that I had for a capital improvement program, you know, back when I first met this Board, we talked about that. And I really feel good about that, the process, how the financing program is in there, all of the details. So that's great and the timing is good because we want to get that initial discussion out of the way to allow us to move right into the budget process. I just want to give you an update that our annual town budget process is definitely underway...
Before you leave the Capitol?
Say that one more time.
Before you leave the Capitol, it needs to be pointed out that because we're in a stronger position financially and there's a lot of credit to go around on that, we actually can have a capital plan that we can basically implement. I just want to just point out that because of our financial pressures and the financial problems for many years, we had a capital plan, but that we couldn't really do a heck of a lot with it. But it's nice to not only have a plan that's well done, that's well managed and is very comprehensive, but it's also nice to be in a position, like I said, thanks to a lot of collective efforts here, that we actually can put some money towards it and actually begin implementing it. So I think that needs to be noted because I know we're not the only ones frustrated by this. There are a lot of departments that have been frustrated by the lack of real progress on capital planning, but it's nice to see us in this position that we're in right now.
Well, let's, let's not be crazy. We're not promising anyone any, any funds, but I, no, I mean, it's a, it's a point well taken, but I think that the idea that the previous capitals that I've seen didn't even have funds associated with them, you couldn't tell what was going to be done and what was going from where and it is a methodical... And it, it is a methodical approach that's more in keeping with the type of capital programming that I've become accustomed to, and, and Bill has done a tremendous job with it. So I, I think you're gonna be happy with just the, the, the product of that plan. Before we even have the first dime, the, the plan is in place that the local residents can interact with that and, and figure out the town's priorities, what we're looking at doing. So at any rate, thank, thank you for, for that. And I was segueing at, at that point into, into the budget process, that we are in full swing right now, and I'm currently in the process of analyzing all of the budget requests that have been received from the town departments. Analyzing in, in very excruciating detail all available funding, working very closely with the finance department. Our new finance director is highly skilled to see her step right into the process and really start spreading her wings already. It's been tremendous. Certainly, we are far in excess of available funds for all of the requests we have, and that, that includes capital as well as operating. But that's as it, as it should be. You know, we're asking town departments for initiatives, and what we're, we're doing right now is finalizing our schedule to meet with every single department to review the requests, the detail, and then the whole process needs to be built from zero, right back up. And every cost center will be factored in. That is a process. It will dominate my schedule probably for the next two to three weeks, but I'll still be available for anything that you need. But we'll, we, we'll have meetings. I mean, they'll go all, all day when you get into some of these things. It's department after department after department. So we'll be able to, by the time we get to the end of December, we'll have a recommended budget, we'll begin those discussions. So it'll be great. In the meantime, we'll get the capital lined up, and you will be able to, you know, when we get to the point of meeting with the individual departments and things, be able to have your arms completely wrapped around the whole, you know, financial picture, budget process, well in advance of town meetings. So we'll continue to work on, on that. I, I wanna bring up, I'm, I'm glad that Mr. Sullivan was on, he brought up that there are two airport environmental assessment meetings scheduled for Monday. At 2:00 to 4:00, there's a virtual meeting, and the, I'll send out to board members, but for members of the public, the instructions on how to get on that virtual airport environmental assessment meeting on the 12th. It's, it's 2:00 to 4:00, and you have to go on the Town of Barnstable website to, to get the Zoom passcode to get in there. And also at 6:00 to 8:00, there's gonna be an in-person meeting at the Barnstable Town Hall. And I, I do, I, I also was a little surprised to see that, that they are requesting that all comments be submitted in advance in writing. I, I think that that's a step, to me, it's almost laughable, but I will say that I am coordinating with our team, you know, we still have QED consulting, and, you know, we've been hammering some of the several key points that are improvements, that will be tremendous improvements for the town, that all along the airport was indicating that they're not opposed to some of the primary things involved with, if you recall, that voluntary flight path and publicizing this, that, you know, we are aware that 90% of the takeoffs are done with instruments that can be easily programmed to a voluntary flight path. And we had previously heard all of the stories, how you can't have a flight path because the pilot determines. Well, the pilot has the ability in emergency situations to override their flight path, but all airports, we've learned this, and, you know, we're ahead of the game now, all airports have the published coordinates for the voluntary flight plans, and, and those are the types of things that are gonna impact the airport performance to the extent that flights won't be directly over local residents' homes. And, and I think could be the, the difference between that airport being able to operate adjacent to our community. So we will have that, that data in, in those comments, and, and this is another step in the process, but I just wanted to make sure everyone knew the meetings were coming up and that we are strong participants in this. And I, I also want to thank, I've had regular meetings with the Hyannis Park Civic Association. Their leadership is great. They're well aware of these issues, concerns, and we're working together on those as well. And so that's moving forward. I, I wanted to let folks know, I, I think some issues came up. Folks were talking about the Harbor Suites Hotel this evening. Just a couple of quick points on that is that I found out today that their zoning Board of Appeals public hearing is scheduled for January 11th. And that's relative to, as you recall, the board authorized the enforcement action of the town's zoning with respect to the length of stay at the local motels. And that is one of the units that received the violation notice. And in their case, they appealed that notice as they have a right to do to the zoning Board of Appeals. So the process is, is they're entitled to a hearing before the zoning Board of Appeals, and then they render an opinion either to uphold a decision of the enforcement officer or not. And so we'll be presenting our case there. We encourage anyone who's interested to go to that hearing.
What time is it, Bob?
I, I don't have, it, the time hasn't been published yet, but we'll get that information, and that'll be up on the website. We'll be just waiting to get the exact time and, and everything, but the, we know it's gonna be on the 11th. They have to set their docket for the times.
Bob, does it take an appeal to trigger the state's overriding of our zoning?
I don't think that there is such a thing as that. But suffice to say, the way I would characterize it, right, is, is that the state certainly seeks to maintain that housing, but we, we don't see any overt evidence of an ability to specifically override zoning. And, and so I don't think that that, that would happen. However, you know, zoning is not the perfect tool, right? There are ways of trying to get around that, but it would trigger if they had a strategy that would involve overriding zoning. That would be the time that they would have to do it, because we provided them a notice of violation of the zoning, right? So then that is, is done at the, the zoning Board of Appeals level, and then you could ostensibly try to sue us in court over it, but we feel at, at the point that it goes through the ZBA, then we would file in the court for an injunction against them. And I think that that is the point, that they would have to determine, you know, what type of strategy that they would employ. And I haven't seen any strategies to date that have said, you know, letter, well, we, we're the state, so we overrule your zoning. But there's other strategies that, you know, we've talked about that, you know, we might have to battle.
At the court level, and, and it's hard to say what the state would do, but they might move to intervene at that point in the case. I, I know, what was it, in the Bourne case with the Board of Health?
Yes.
When they had certain health regulations that were being violated. The state basically wrote the Board of Health a letter and said, we don't think you, we don't think these regulations are applicable in, in, in periods of states of emergency. And as far as I know, I, I don't know what the outcome was, but I think, I think they, they backed off. I think, I think the Board of Health backed off, but.
I think they chose to back off.
But, but see, the action, as Bob said, the action would really be the Town of Yarmouth versus a particular business entity, right? Let's, let's just talk hypotheticals, 'cause it doesn't really matter who the town is proceeding against. They're going against ABC Corporation. They're really not going against the state, they're not. But in Bourne, the state wrote this letter, and I think everybody's seen it, I mean, I know we've had it in our email, where they said, well, when the legislature funded this emergency housing program, that was a tacit approval of, of these emergency powers and things like that. So it remains to be seen what'll happen, but for now, at least, for now. It's a beef between the town and the, and the business owner.
Is there a concurrent hearing with the Yarmouth Resort?
No, the Yarmouth Resort is proceeding directly to litigation. So that is in town council's lap to get into the court and get an injunction, and that's what they're working on filing, that filing now. Hasn't been filed yet, but they're working on that, because they don't get to go to the zoning Board of Appeals, because they did not file a timely appeal. So, so that process may be, may be quicker. So the, the two of them, those are the two facilities, the only two facilities that there are, we're aware of that have zoning violations. And those two have been the subject of enforcement.
See, there, there's a provision in the law that you have to exhaust your administrative remedies.
Right.
So if you have, if you're supposed to go through step two to get, before you go to court, and you don't go through step two, and the court's gonna say, hey, you know, we can't accommodate you, because if you had gone through step two, who knows, you might have prevailed, right? But you didn't do that. You didn't care enough to do that, so. Generally, if you skip any administrative steps, we'll not look too kindly at you.
Now, two other things I just wanted to mention on the Harbor Suites, so that you're aware, that, that first is, you know, folks have seen, there's a couple of trucks out in, in front, and there's a little fenced off area, and they're, and they're digging. And the, the hotel is installing some electric vehicle chargers with the appropriate local permits that, to my understanding, doesn't have anything to do with the migrant housing. But I still get people sit across the street and take pictures, which we've asked people not to do, because, you know, that's kind of harassment of the whole situation. You know, we'd like to just go the enforcement route. But if, if people do have those questions, that's what the, that construction is. And the, the second item that was mentioned this evening that I wanted to bring up, I, I didn't raise any alarm on this because of the, the nature of the report I have received within the last two days from the Board of Health, and it is with respect to the medical testing of the individuals in the migrant program staying at the, the Harbor Suites. And there was, it was stated that there were instances of tuberculosis. And, and I just need to make everyone clear that if an individual contracts tuberculosis, the traces of that disease remain in your body, you know, forever. And so long after you have active tuberculosis, that, you know, it can be detected. And that's exactly what has occurred with a small number of the residents there, that they had identified through their medical testing, these latent tuberculosis infections that were not active, were from years previous, are not contagious or active in any way, shape, or form, and the individuals there do not have. Symptoms of, of that. So the, based on the information I received from the Board of Health, that there's absolutely no risk to our general population as a result of, of those cases, I, you know, I, I didn't raise it to a level to attempt to convince people that there was an active threat when, when there's not. In, in fact, you know, there are actual people that have nothing to do with the migrant program that do have active cases of tuberculosis in our community. And, and those are being managed, you know, by case professionals handling it in a certain way, but, but they don't involve these folks. And so the, the Board of Health, in giving me this information, they, you know, made sure that I understood it, and that I, I was careful not to present this information in a way that may, you know, spike fear in the community that there are active cases of tuberculosis associated with the migrant housing there. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, and I can get a fuller report on, on all of the details of how that latent situation, and what, you know, the, the Board of Health is doing with their test results, but I just wanted to make that clear to you.
You're understanding what the lady said, that there was about approximately four cases?
I had.
Did you, were you given a number?
Yeah, I, I think it was between two and four.
Between two, so, so relatively consistent with what she said. Certainly not a, a large number.
Right.
And not active cases, that's the important.
Zero active cases.
That's interesting. I didn't know what you just said about the fact that it stays in your body even when it's medically addressed and.
I learned that as well.
If we get that on the website, we'll kind of dampen the hysteria that may come out of those comments tonight.
So I'm working on trying to get, get another update. We haven't had a lot to update. I, I didn't wanna keep roiling the water. It's been static since the enforcement notices went out, and since the state has determined that they kept their program, but. And the next thing we want to talk a little bit about, there was a great Route 6A forum that, that was held up at the fire station. I wasn't able to make it myself, but a lot of the feedback that I received, and I reviewed some of their, their plans, it looks like that some of the strategies are, you know, resonating with, with at least some of the residents out there.
Did they do like a presentation that we could get a copy of?
Yes. There, I have a detailed presentation, there's slides, and it has the actual depictions of, you know, the, the streetscape solutions. And, you know, one thing that was good is, you know, we, we spent the last year, we had so many forums and feedback on what folks were looking for, and the, the ideas, you know, resonated in there. People didn't wanna see a lot of big curbs, a lot of built up stuff to try to keep it as natural of an environment as possible, preserve parking where possible. And the one issue, I, I think in terms of the actual physical streetscape part, it appears that, you know, that there's a, a good plan in place that, that has, you know, kind of minimal improvements, but it does make it a little nicer, restore some of the areas that have deteriorated. But there is another issue that we haven't been able to address that I, I think, you know, we have to think about whether, you know, we wanna have the town jump in the middle of this, or, or encourage the local businesses to, but there is, I think, the continuing feeling that there's a, a large amount of space for parking that is located behind the businesses that is not effectively managed in a way that shares the opportunity for parking among all of the businesses. You know, for one reason or another, the business community hasn't been able to organize themselves to leverage that area. And, you know, I'm not saying that the town goes in and takes the area, you know, it would be horrible to, to, to kind of do that, but what help that we can give them to organize the parking, get the appropriate signage, to share the, the facilities. It, it just strikes everyone that if all of that space could be laid out properly and, and used, you know, it's some, not very dissimilar to historic districts, and look at Chatham, you know, and, and some of the other towns with the historic downtowns. Those are areas where the town has gone in and consolidated that property and then operates it as, as parking. But there's got to be a way to leverage the area that is there, so that parking can be done behind the businesses in that central core. And, and I think that until that really moves forward, there's, there's always gonna be a pinch, you know?
I would agree. Is there any, speaking of parking in that whole area, has there any, been any discussion with the, the folks that are renovating one of the buildings next to the Cooperative Bank? You know, the old Bank Ameri, you know, that property over there?
Urology Associates.
Yeah. You know, there's a substantial amount of parking over there. That would have been an area to have worked some kind of arrangement out. Is that on the table at all in any of these scenarios?
Well, we haven't, as, as a community, gone in to try to put together all of the off-street parking options, 'cause they're all private property. But we've been just, I think, looking a lot at the, the streetscape to try to square that away, and folks don't want a lot done.
It's huge inside, though.
Yeah. I just, you, you just look at that parcel there, there's a significant amount of real estate.
Right in front of the building.
Exactly, and along the side. And you would think that some kind of accommodation could have been ma, could be made. I know that when the restaurant across the street, the old Optimus Cafe, when they were.
Golden jalapeno.
Yeah. Yeah. The outfit that I guess won't be getting their license renewed anytime soon. The, they had indicated they had made an arrangement with the folks across the street. So, you know, I was thinking that maybe that could yield some opportunities that, for everyone in that area, but I'm not sure anything's really been.
That part needs, it needs more work, but, but it's, it's, you know, not without its possibilities. And, and when folks come, you know, to the meetings, we should teach each and every one of them this, that, look, there needs to be a cooperative effort in the village of sharing some of these resources and working together. And if we do, there's a lot that can be achieved, but it, you know, when, when you're dealing with private property, you know, the, the town doesn't go in, you know, and just wave its wand. People are gonna have to come to the table and, and I, but, but I, I think the level of sort of cooperation and.
Improved?
Yeah, I, I think it has improved. When we first started, it was just.
It was, it was like Palestinians and the Israelis, I felt, you know, in a mini version, so to speak. But if it's improving, that's terrific. You know, there are, you know, there was a time when the state government had programs, you know, Bill's been around a long time like I have, where we had programs to help underwrite parking in small urban areas.
Yeah, urban renewal.
There were.
P. Wedd used to do that.
Yeah, P. Wedd. I mean, who knows, maybe Mass Works, but there may, there, there may be some opportunities. Again, if there's a spirit of cooperation, you know, it's amazing the kinds of things that can be achieved. And, you know, if the property owners are willing to cooperate, there could be something done potentially in joint measure with the town. So, but I'm glad to hear that, that things are going well, where things are moving in a direction. I guess the question for the chairman and, and the board is, are we ripe for an agenda item on this particular topic? Or do we need to let sort of the parties kinda continue to deliberate and work on things? Because obviously, as, as you've heard, there's a lot of board interest in, in, in this whole topic.
Yeah, I think, you know, in order to, to, before we get it here again, we need to just let the, we'll distribute all of the options out to you and, and get, I think, a little more feedback from where people are coming from on the potential options. And before anything is selected, before any direction is set, critical milestone is to be right back in front of this board and hopefully with local residents where at least some of them express, you know, some support for a particular direction.
That'd be great.
But we'll be back in front of the board before anything else is done.
Sounds good.
That's all I have.
Anything else?
Nope.
I'll say. Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.